...
... I pledge to all the City Council Chamber organizational meeting to order. Could we please, um, let's do a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you please start with a roll call?
Yes.
Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Council members Bagley, Christensen, Finley, Moore, Peck, Santos.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
Okay, now we have the minutes from October 24th to approve. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move that we approve the minutes of October 24th.
All right, that's been moved and seconded. Let's vote on that motion. Okay, it looks like we have all votes for and Councilmember, um, yeah, Moore is absent tonight. Yep. So now it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just want to say that it has been a pleasure getting to know you and serving with you and Gabe and Councilmember Moore. I wouldn't trade it for anything, getting to know you guys, and I wish you all the best going forward. You guys have done a great job, served our community well, and thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. It's a new system, by the way. Just was installed. I just want to say, I'm, I said it before, but I'm gonna really miss Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Santos and Councilmember Moore, who is not present. You guys served well and you're fun, so you will be missed. Thanks.
Well, I guess I'll chime in here briefly. I will miss the city staff and how much they've helped me over the last six years. It's been a wonderful experience and they've just been remarkable. I've loved my council teammates and going through something like the flood together, that was quite a team-building experience. And I've enjoyed, you know, all of the things that we've worked on together and even some of the things that didn't go my way, I was fine with that because I know that everybody always works to make what they think is the best decision for the best of Longmont, and that's all that really matters because I don't always know what's right. And sometimes having other opinions makes us make better, makes everything better for the city of Longmont. So anyway, I want to thank everybody that's helped me my last six years and it's been a blast. And it's gonna be fun, not to be mayor, but I'm gonna miss a lot about being mayor. And I just want to say thank you for this opportunity to everybody in this community and my council teammates and the city staff. It's been wonderful, so thank you. All right. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Wow. I wanted to try the new system. It's been 10 years since the last one when I first came on. No, thank you to the staff. Thank you to the residents of Longmont for the last nine-plus years who had their, and trust me with their, being their representative to the city, I really appreciate it. As I said the last meeting we were at, thank you to the staff and most importantly, thank you to my family. So, thanks, dear. And Tuesday nights are gonna be, you know, maybe I'll cook a little bit more.
All right, I guess now we'll move on to public invited to be heard, and we've got Jonathan Singer's signed up. Please come down with your lovely daughter and...
Hi, Jonathan Singer and Gwendolyn Singer, 2201 14th Avenue. And I just wanted to say as a member of the public, not only as your state House representative from Longmont, but as a member of the public, thank you guys for your service. To those of you who are leaving, Councilmember Santos, as well as Councilmember Moore, even though he's not here today. We may not have agreed on everything, but the one thing we agreed on is we love this city and we all want to do what's right for it. And so, and to Mayor Coombs, what an interesting eight years it's been, hasn't it?
Yes, it has.
We've seen floods and we've seen economic development, but at the end of the day, we've actually seen a city grow and become stronger, and that doesn't happen by accident. It happens through real effort. And thanks to staff for providing the cupcakes today. My silent partner here certainly appreciates that. To the incoming city council members, you've got a great staff. You've got a great staff. Please don't forget that. Use your staff here. They're a wonderful resource, not only for council, but for citizens and state legislators alike. And with that, I'm gonna leave it at that because I think this one might want to, you know, finish her cupcake.
Thank you.
But thank you all for your service.
All right, so now we're gonna move on to squaring in the newly-elected city council.
I, Brian Bagley, solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the Un- that I will uphold the Constitutions of the United States and the State of Colorado and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Longmont and that I will faithfully perform the duties of mayor of Longmont to the best of my abilities.
Thank you.
Thank you, Val.
I, Polly Christensen, do solemnly swear that I will solemnly uphold the Constitutions of the United States and the State of Colorado and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Longmont and I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of Councilmember-at-Large to the best of my ability.
I, Erin Rodriguez, do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitutions of the United States and the State of Colorado and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Longmont and I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of Councilmember-at-Large to the best of my ability. Thank you very much.
I, Marcia Martin, do solemnly affirm that I will uphold the State, the Constitutions of the United States and the State of Colorado and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Longmont and that I will faithfully perform the duties of Council, of the office of Councilmember Ward II to the best of my ability.
Councilmember Santos?
Mayor, I move that we, the current city council adjourns, signee die.
I'll second that. Let's vote. And that passes six to zero with Councilmember Jeff Moore absent. And we are done.
Bonnie? You ready? Technically, I guess I gotta decide that now, huh? All right, we're ready, I've decided. All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's first city council meeting under our new 2017 city council. So let's go ahead and just start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to point out, we got one thing down. Unified, correct. All right, let's do a roll call.
Oh, Mayor Bagley?
Here.
Councilmembers Christensen, Finley, Martin, Peck, Rodriguez.
Here.
Mayor Bagley, we have a quorum.
Thank you, thank you. And I've got a slight problem here. It's the, my agenda's not coming up. Hold on a second. I'm just seeing the organizational and I thought I'd made a copy. Well, we've, uh, got it. Thank you, thank you. Well, we didn't have, well, see, we screwed up. We didn't need to say the pledge, but it's a wonderful country we live in. It's a wonderful, wonderful country we live in. All right, so let's go down to actually, uh, this time, I guess we're just gonna go ahead and call the order of the new city council. And we've got two electional items tonight. The first one is the election of a mayor pro tem. And then the second one is an appointment of city board members to city boards and commissions and outside boards. And so, let's go ahead and start with the election of mayor pro tem. And I didn't know what a mayor pro tem was when I was elected, but essentially, we need somebody to basically hang out with the mayor and assist me and stuff. We also, more than anything, if I'm not, if I'm absent, they take over and run the meeting and act as mayor. And then also, should I die, they become mayor. Knock on wood. Don't get any, don't get any ideas, Councilmember Finley. So, does anyone have any comments or suggestions, or do you want to just go right to a vote? Ah, Marcia Martin, Councilmember Martin?
I'd like to nominate Holly Christensen.
Second.
Okay, so let's go, I believe this is the only vote that is, that we will ever take that is actually secret. So, I believe we should get the ballots and vote.
One, Polly Christensen, Polly Christensen, Polly Christensen, Polly Christensen, Polly Christensen, yes, and Polly Christensen. So, Polly Christensen will be our mayor for ten. and Polly Christensen. So Polly Christensen will be our mayor pro tem.
And the city staff actually asked if I could provide a sitting arrangement. I wanted to hold off until we knew who the mayor pro tem would be, so we'll be sitting right here, if you don't mind. At this, yeah, not tonight, but yeah, but yes, as of tomorrow. And then I guess my question here is, we are set on the agenda for appointment of city council members to city boards and commissions, but I was told today that, council member Martin, you didn't get the, the email. So my, so my, so what I would propose is we actually wait till tomorrow. It would allow council member Martin to take a look at it and you don't get stuck with all the bad boards. Anybody? I'm kidding, I'm just kidding. What about, what about you, Val? Do you have something to say? Val, our city clerk?
So there were a couple options in your agenda. One of them was to vote tonight. Move it to another meeting would be another one. You might also want to consider moving it to the 28th and then send me your choices, top five choices, and then actually, that gives you a little more time to consider what you want to be on. And then we can make those appointments on the 28th rather than tomorrow night.
Mayor Pro Tem Christensen?
Now I speak? Okay. Yeah, I do think we should wait at least till tomorrow night, so Marsha has a chance to read it. And keep in mind that we'll, we will be having another member join us and we're not sure when, but then we'll be probably reexamining this again, so this is sort of provisional. I would rather get it done as early as possible because these boards are meeting, you know, all the time. But if other people want to put it off till the 28th, that's fine with me.
Council member Peck?
Alright. I move that we put off appointing liaisons to the board and commissions until November 28th meeting.
Do we have any debate on this particular issue? Then let's vote. The motion passes unanimously. With that, we'll just go ahead and move on to public invited to be heard. It's the end of the meeting, so pretty much anybody can say anything. We haven't screwed up too bad yet. Representative Singer, anything to say? Alright, alright. Then if there's no, if the, Strider?
Uh, well, welcome, Mayor Bagley, a new council of 2017. I'm Strider Benson, 951 with 17th. I just want to give congratulations to the elected members and also to our whole city of Longmont for conducting a mostly honorable and fair election. Clearly fair and mostly, you know, I, I think it went very well. Not all of my candidates succeeded, but some of them did and therefore. The, uh, I think Longmont, at least in the 12 years I've been in this town, has mostly had a very honorable record of supporting the, the issues and the, and the welfare and benefit of the entire population of Longmont. I expect and hope to continue that. And we must be on our guard because there are serious forces in this country that are threatening the democratic foundations of our society. And at least we can do everything possible to strengthen the idea and the function of democracy from the bottom up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Anyone else? Alright, with that, we will move on to mayor and council comments. Council member Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I just want to let you guys know, I'm, I'm happy that we are a new council and moving forward. I will not be able to be at our meeting tomorrow as I have to leave to go to National League of Cities. My meeting is early in the morning on Wednesday and I was unable to change my flight. But I know that you'll help our new mayor get through that first meeting with flying colors. And congratulations to all of you.
Council member Martin?
Yes, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone who helped me get here. And I'm very glad to be here and I'm glad for the nice welcome. And I'm glad to see Citizen Benson in fine form tonight. And I want to thank him for his welcome as well. So, Mayor Bagley, let's get started.
Sounds good to me. Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Christensen?
That sounds odd, doesn't it? Well, anyway, um, I want to thank everybody also who helped me get here the first time and the second time, so thank you. And I wanted to welcome, uh, Marsha Martin and Erin Rodriguez to their seats and Mayor Bagley to his. And Bonnie, I will see you at NLC when I recover from an all-night flight, when we recover from an all-night. And councilman Peck, it's always good to see you again. Thank you. Welcome, everybody.
Council member Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I just want to say welcome to the new council. It's going to be exciting to continue the work that has made Longmont such an incredible place to live in. And I'm excited to work with you, so it's gonna be fun. Let's go, Brian. Move it along.
Thank you, thank you. Council member Rodriguez, we are rolling with you.
That's right. Thank you, Mayor Bagley, and thank you especially to everybody that helped contribute and volunteered to my campaign. But at the same time, I just want to make sure it's abundantly clear that I will be a fair-minded and open representative to all those that also did not vote for me and also those who are unable to vote. So please feel free to contact me. You have an ear and you have a voice. And please, please, I look forward to serving you. And I'm very excited to work with my colleagues here on city council. Thank you very much.
Uh, I guess I'll take the last slot. I want to say thank you, first of all, to basically everyone who participated in this election. Whether you voted for me or not, I do realize I represent all of Longmont. We all represent all of Longmont. And I want to say thank you specifically to my wife, Yvonne, and my children. They put up with my grumpiness and the stress for the last couple months, so I appreciate that. Everyone kept telling me, it doesn't matter if you win or lose because you've still got a great family. And they, they are truly great, so I wanted to say that. The other thing is I'm extremely excited to work with this council. They represent some, I think, some of the most passionate, intelligent people that this community has to offer. I mean that sincerely. They, uh, in listening to the debates, their comments, reading their literature, I, I think the biggest challenge is gonna be, you know, we've got 2,000 pounds that we need to fit inside a 50, 50-gallon drum. And we've got, we've just got a lot to accomplish, so I'm excited, looking forward to it. And hopefully, at the end of these two years, I will be able to look at each other and say fun times, good times. So, thank you very much. And city, city manager, any remarks?
No comments, Mayor, council.
City attorney, any remarks?
No comments, Mayor Bagley.
Wise man. Then we are, we are adjourned.